All right.
Gland, you're to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome.
All meeting in order.
Yeah.
And if it's into directions on the agenda?
No.
Okay, through.
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Prove the minutes after we're sixteen. I believe they appear correct from last week, he did motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carry. Prove the claims.
I looked at the claims of two hundred eleven thousand five hundred and sixty twenty-two for general and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six eighty-five for drainage.
Also again.
Okay, two, one, one, five, six, oh, point twenty-two and two, seven, six, six, point eight-five. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All carry. General public concerns. Everybody here for later, okay? Dean, you're up.
All right.
You all right?
Yeah.
You're gonna survive.
Monday morning, I'm there, okay.
Here, have some coffee.
I need some. Excuse me.
This something you don't wanna do, or what?
No, no, I do, yes, I do, I do. Okay, was Kenny Borland retiring from the sheriff's department, we, uh, we advertised for a deputy sheriff's position. Um, we had ten individuals apply, out of those six, out of those ten, six were in it, or six are certified peace officers in the state of Iowa. Which is pretty good. Um, the day of the testing, um, the civil service, they interviewed eight, uh, two people had pulled their, their applications. Uh, Chief Deputy, uh, Lampy and myself, uh, out of those eight, we interviewed seven. The civil service gave us a list of the top, they're supposed to give us top ten candidates, they give us top eight. Um, Aaron Bennett was listed as the number one. Um, we did the interview of the seven and between Chief Deputy Lampy and myself, we came up with Aaron being our number one candidate. So that's why I'm here, to get her approval for hire. So what I'm looking at is, um, hiring Aaron as a deputy sheriff effective November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to start her out at sixty-eight percent of the sheriff's salary. Um, of course, we've been kind of battling the days of vacation. Uh, the members that are in the union, um, agreed to fifteen days of vacation in her first year. And then the board supervisor will have to waive the nepotism clause that's in the Humboldt County personnel policy.
Is technically a new hire gets how many days of vacation?
They get zero days for the first year, and then they get ten days after the first. But being Aaron has fifteen years of service, um, she's a certified peace officer already, that's ten grand that I don't have to pay for. Um, she's testified in, in federal courts, she's worked great with our department, and, um, just about fifteen days would be, um, you know, which she should be deserved for the first year.
And that, that would equal to years or three years, or when, when do they get their fifteen days?
After four years, you're pulling, after four.
What's the next jump, uh, indication for deputies after fifteen days, after four years?
Um, four years, you get fifteen days, and then, uh, what is that, after nine years of continuing to serve, then you jump up to fifteen.
I thought it was fifteen after four.
Yeah, fifteen after four, yep, yep, you're right.
And the next jump is how many years before you get anymore?
Nine years of service, you get twenty days.
That's why nine years is the next step.
Yep.
So Aaron operate under that, once she's hired them.
Yep.
I thought she was having that nine years of sheriff's service.
Yes, yes.
I have been in contact with Mike Galloway, who is our HR lawyer, and so has Dean, and he has gone through everything, and as long as the union has signed off on it, which they have, right, Dean, they've already signed off on it and everything. Yep, he, he approves it. Um, it is so hard to get police, um, officers right now, and to get somebody that's certified, and somebody that's known in the community, and somebody that has already longevity with the Humboldt Police PD, I would make that motion to accept the hire of Aaron Benny. Excuse me, I got Dean's problem.
Also again.
Second, any discussion?
That is the process we have to go through because this isn't following our handbook. So that's going to be.
Remember, yeah. I just, uh, this is all, I know you've done your due diligence, I'm checking, and what Sandy said is absolutely true. And I know I've been speaking with Mike, he said the same thing, it's really difficult for any hires, especially in law enforcement.
Yes.
So it is very difficult.
Um, well, the first year that I was the sheriff, we had forty-two applications for one, one division.
Yeah.
And that was twenty-seven years ago.
Yeah.
I thought we did really well, get ten this time.
Yeah, I know.
And six of them certified, so.
And I know the certification is a huge deal, we're glad that Aaron has, from her years of experience.
I think the number of applicants goes to your department, Dean, you run a very good department, we don't have a long, a lot of problems, we have a lot of longevity, so I think that's a tribute to you and, and your department.
Well, when Kenny, when Kenny announced his retirement, and the day that, uh, he was gonna have his retirement party and stuff, I just added up all of our hours of service for the sheriff's department, there's ten of us, and this is including Jenny, who's just been with me for two years. We have two hundred and four years of service, so that's about twenty and a half years per person, so that's pretty good. So.
Do we need to put the, the deal for the nepotism in the motion, or how do you?
Yes, good.
That flies bothers.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'll get it. That was the only thing on that, which is just a technicality, and I know it's been done in other departments, Mike's information, it would've been nice to have seen that prior, so we didn't know, you know, that, and I know you did send some information to that effect that you checked into it, so, but.
Then we have an emotion on the floor in a second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I can.
Where's that? All in favor of that, and then we'll go to the nepotism part.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All is carried, okay, now go address the nepotism. Nepotism.
We need to put the waiver that Mike has drawn up for us, approve that? Okay, I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
You have a.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have a speed prepared, or you want?
Changing uniform.
Yes. Appreciate it, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
About the good work.
Welcome.
Dan.
Appreciate it.
Ben here.
Ben's up here.
Just walked in.
Morning, you're on.
Well, we'll sit up here.
All right.
Morning. Got a couple items on the agenda today. Uh, the first is to approve an application to work in the county's right-of-way with, uh, Aaron Cran. Um, this is little triangle west as you're heading out of Livermore. That was donated to Humboldt County, and it doesn't really specify if it was donated to Humboldt County Secondary Roads, or just Humboldt County in general. Uh, I believe we're looking at putting a dump station in that location there in Livermore. Um, anywhere there's a dead tree there that he wants to take down.
When you say a dump station for camper dump?
Yes.
Concentration for that campsite, that's in works, but this is, yeah.
Yep.
Ben's right, that is a, somehow became in the, I don't know, we talked, it's possible many years ago that road did change, and people maybe ended up with that little triangle and obviously didn't want it.
Didn't own it.
Yeah. County can have that or keep it.
Yeah, so I, I gotta look back and, uh, see how, who it was that donated it and how it was donated.
We actually do on.
Yeah, I feel like Humboldt County owns it, I just don't know which entity of Humboldt County.
Oh, okay.
So it might be you guys as the board are the trustees of that triangle.
Four years ago, can't remember who. The department, I don't think it was.
We're not, we're not doing taking the tree down, Aaron's taking the tree.
Aaron's taking the tree.
He wants to take, yeah, that's why he needs to work. Did you get everything in order on the?
I'm just waiting on a copy of his insurance, but otherwise the, the permit and everything's there.
Okay.
So.
Uh, I make a motion pending that everything is in order to prove that work in the right-of-way for Aaron to cut down the tree.
Now, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carries.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve voucher number eight to Dixon Construction for the Lone Tree Bridge project for eighty-four hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. This is paying the remainder of engineering fabric and the rip rap that was placed. Um, the only remaining items for payment will be seed mulch and silt fence.
Got a question, are they gonna do any guardrails here, on, on ring the bridge?
No.
Okay.
Uh, the bridge that we put in was thirty foot wide, which is technically wider than the road itself, so we don't have to. If it's deemed later that we need to, we can, we built blisters on all four corners.
Well, yeah, I looked at it, and I seen that there's spots marked there, and then, oh, it looks like they're gonna put guardrails on.
Yeah, that was just, uh, the mark where the blisters needed to be.
Okay.
For the dirt contractor.
So then the retainage is still, or is this all there?
Uh, the retainage is still there, uh, there's twenty-three thousand and change in retainage, still sitting out there, as well as the uh, what is that, about seven thousand for the silt fence seeding and fertilizing and mulch.
None of that's been done yet?
None of that's been done yet.
But you said that one week or so ago that you were.
They were supposed to be in tail end of last week, but I didn't see any activity when I drove by.
But plan is to still get it done now.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So, I'll second that. Any other discussions? That's a payment of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-sixty-three cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
The last item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a funding agreement with the Iowa DOT for next year's paving project from Hardy South five and a half miles to Highway Three. This will use, um, a million dollars of our STP funding through the state, with the remainder coming from our front-of-market money.
Which street slash road is that?
P sixty-six from Hardy South, yes.
Will that be milled, then?
Uh, we're looking at doing a two-inch mill from the outside in with a five-inch overlay on top.
Yeah, it's a ton of semi-traffic.
Yes.
Ton of semi-traffic. Uh, you mentioned one time we might be going to the county line, kind of another project with that.
Yes, uh, so this is just the funding agreement with the DOT, but the plan is for P sixty-six to get done all the way down the county line. Uh, from Highway Three down to the county line will be done with local funds.
Okay.
And then the other part of the paving will be from P sixty-six east into Renway, that three-mile stretch.
Is that all gonna get done together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so next year?
Next year.
Nice, yeah, that all needs it.
Yeah.
So, well, everything's in order then with that, Ben, for the funding with the DOT?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carries.
Um, beyond that, PCI moved in this morning to start removal of the bridge on Kentucky Avenue. Uh, we called it Talers Bridge at one time, um, but plan is tear that out, and box culver should be delivered Wednesday, Thursday this week, so we'll get that replaced here in the next two weeks as well.
That's all.
And stuff. Water level's still low.
Very low, yeah, there's hardly anything in the bottom of that right now.
What's the size of those boxes, that's a deep ditch?
Uh, twin twelve by twelve, I believe, going in there.
Yeah.
So.
Does that still deserve a degree?
Uh, we still inspect it, yeah, it, it'll still get inspected every year, uh, or every two years, the first four years, and then it gets switched to being inspected, I think, every ten? Because it's recat box.
Yeah.
So. Anything else? Nothing else for me? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make it.
Any update on the radio?
Help our bottom, get the motor. Uh, I need to call them today, yeah.
Not that I'm worried about snow, that's its job.
Yeah. Moving on, you know, yeah, we're a little early there, so let's move on. Off-rice chairman Simon Gates by contract with Taylor's and Cooney. PC for legal services on behalf of Humboldt County土地局. What is that all about?
Guessing it's what they were talking about the other night about the dam.
Right, John Beatty made the recommendation that the conservation board should also get their own legal. Um, and so this is, I think they're, they did the research, and this is who they came up with.
I need a few phone calls as far as who would have some knowledge of situations like this, and Isaac is the one that recommended Alarson Juney, so that's why we checked him.
They've used them before several times, so.
And John isn't comfortable doing it, I would just assume that's somebody who specializes in.
Correct.
Well, this is an agreement with Alars and Cooney.
Yes.
I want to order an hour, keep it full. Okay, need a motion to.
I'll make that motion to approve. Taylor's and Cooney for the conservation.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved class C liquor license for outdoor service. Copy of it in your package, has your things in order?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, is this for?
Uh, winery?
Winery. Yeah, it's just for like next year. Weekend.
It says pending grand shop reviews.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
But they are ahead of the game, because they're trying to get effectively, it's, uh, nobody before, they gotta get their liquor license from the state before.
Yep.
I guess, and they're going into a busy time in November through spring, it's probably a lot of outdoor service.
That's why I was wondering.
It's when they're licensed.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm making a grant, he's running a different special.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do the liquor license for, for outdoor service at real value to winery, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both carries. Step place on file, MMP short form annual update for Doug Sandman, number fifty-seven, four twenty-one. Think this is for his catalog. Make no change here. No changes.
The same thing we've been doing?
Yep, this is for.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming everything's in order, he'd be in here to explain some, so, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Eric. Step in place on file, the weed commissioners. Well, being the weed commissioner, and the fact that the state, uh, weed commissioners office requires a report every year, submitted to the board supervisors by November first, and returned to the IDAL's office by December first, it's, it's just a formality, if not technicality, that I go through every year. So I have that all in order, um, we've maintained a pretty tight budget on our weed control, but I think we've gotten pretty darn good results, uh, was a shout-out to secondary roads, and Ben in particular for helping out with the locations, so that we can kind of keep it down to, you know, very minimum, keep the passable, but we've had, I think, uh, good and continued success with the way that we're handling the weed control, you know, it's, it's not perfect, remember, we aren't eradicating them, but we're doing a good job. So with that, is there any questions pertaining to weed control?
I think we also have a group of farmers that do a lot of spraying along their fence rows.
A lot of them that do, Bruce, and that's why it's critically important in our county, people are very particular. Granted, in my experience, not everybody is, so sometimes I have a conversation with folks.
Right.
CRP can be an issue. Um, other general areas, but generally speaking, compared to other counties, we are doing this for a very cost-effective amount, and we're doing a very good control, but, so, like I said, it's just basically, you can take a shirt, take a look at the report, but it talks about the weeds that we're after, you know, how much we spend, like I said, we're keeping that quite well in check from year to year. Of course, it did go up a little bit year over year, just because everything else did, but not, not humongously. So I feel pretty good about that, and, uh, we got a good company to work with. That's what helps make my job easier, is working with the brush and weed control folks that do this, so, um, if there's not any questions, it's just, like I say, a technicality that we approve it and send it off to the state for their aisles.
And, and this is a separate contract with them besides the drainage?
Yes, it is.
Just to clear that up, that isn't part of the drainage.
No.
Coverage.
It is not.
The brush control that we do in our drainage ditch is.
That is, that is like Rick said, through the drainage districts, and that program, if anybody wants to know, has been for years with them, and it is approximately a third of each, of a third of the county's drainage districts each year. So it's on a three-year rotation for brush control and drainage districts. But yeah, this is a separate entity.
Same company, just.
Same company, right-of-way, or other higher is drainage district.
Well, with that, I'd make a motion to accept it, I didn't read it.
And you sure can, but it's not very exciting. It's not very.
I, I didn't read it, but a motion to accept it and send it down the other direction.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Did you read it?
No, I, I.
I just, so everybody knows, I always maintain a copy from year to year of said report, and I always.
Perfect.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Nobody goes dressed up as a property tax.
Was she talking to us or not?
No.
Linda, mute your phone.
I got a question, Todd, uh, weed control on the trails. Pat, you take care of yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that for the audience, in case I lose one.
Okay, all, all in favor of the motion to accept a weed commissioner's report?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both carries. All right. Oh, maybe you have to sign this. I figured that.
This one.
This is my re-certification every year, so that I'm just going to weed commissioner. I'm glad it's on, I figured, if somebody else would like to read. Oh, you like this, I do, I enjoy it, and then that's the report on pressures, but, cover sheet. Thank you.
Go, go with it.
Yep, you have to send both to the state.
Okay.
Okay, you. Still a couple, apparently, anybody got any objection to moving back up to the dam? If not, Brett, you're up.
Yeah, I, uh, I asked for, I don't see him on the screen now, Casey Welty, uh, from the flood plain, and, uh, damn safety, he was supposed to join us, talk along with Zane Oggy, are you guys there?
He's on. Casey's on.
And I'm here too, Brett.
Okay, good, thanks for joining us, guys, uh, what we ask you to, to get on this board is, uh, we're trying to see if we could just, if you get some attention of the dam, or in charge of the maintenance or taking care of it, if we wanted to fix just the gates, uh, in order to see what kind of sediment we can move before we tour into the rest of the project. Um, I was asking for some clarification, because both sides are um, hearing what they want to hear, and I just want to have one or both of you clarify what the process is, what the rules and regulations are for replacing the gates, and if that can be done before you do the, the whole project.
Casey, I think that particular question would be more of a damn safety question, and, and, uh, I'll let you take that.
Okay, sounds good, um, so we, um, we have this report from, sorry, I'm also reading while trying to say it, we have this report from twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three from Acxiom Consultants that I think they did a dive inspection and a, a visual inspection of the dam. And I just, I just got it recently, so I haven't had a lot of time to, to read it, but I'm pretty sure it says the first major repair that should be done is, um, stabilizing the dam from, I think it was over top, overturning or sliding, um, because there's, um, erosion underneath underneath the, uh, the foundation of the dam. Um, and then, of course, the gates are, are not in good shape, and they need repaired, and, um, a few other things. So all of them need addressed. Um, the, the, from that report, it doesn't sound like the gates are the first step that they recommended, um, to be repaired. Um, but we could, if you had plans to do all of it, and you actually had budget to do all of it, and it wasn't just, we might do that later, we could consider. and you actually had budget to do all of it and it wasn't just, we might do that later, we could consider like a phasing approving a phased repair.
Well, Casey, in talking with Nate, um, the concept or the thought process was that if we get the gates fixed to see how much sediment we could move is relatively cheap part of that project um before we tore into the rest of the dam because we know once we started the rest of the dam it uh then you have to do it all and submit for all. And Nate told me that's about an eighteen month process. So the thought process was let's try the cheapest thing first because the biggest elephant in the room is getting rid of that sediment. Um, so that's that was the mindset behind that, just seeing what we could move before we tore into the whole project. Um. And I was asking for the protocol of when you can open and close the gates and how that works and is it up high watermarks or how does that work? Or is it possible? In your opinion, if we just come to you and say, can we just repair, replace the gates without touching the rest of the dam, would that, is that permissible?
If you're spending money on repairing a piece of the dam that doesn't really affect the safety of the dam, well, we have this report that says it's at the end of its life, we'd want to know that something is happening with the rest of the dam, whether that's repairing the rest of it. Are you wanting to remove sediment and then end up removing the dam? Like, what is the overall?
Our our overall goal is to save Lake Nokoma. So um that's why we're we know that's an eighteen month process, what Nate told me uh to apply for all that. So minimum eighteen month process. So that's why we thought if we could get started on the gates, that was the mindset there.
So Brett, um, in in the conversations and just, you know, kind of looking at my notes um that that I've had with you. Um, earlier in the season, I I'd mentioned that um gate repair can be expensive. Um, and can I give Rutland as the example that back back in that time, I think it was something like three quarters of a million dollars. Um, and that I I really wouldn't recommend um doing the gates without a hol- holistic set of repairs. Um, but uh uh in our last conversation, uh, well, actually, the last two conversations, um, uh you you had thrown out a couple other things. One is um that you could, you thought there was sort of a bargain repair for more like seventy-five thousand dollars that can uh get the gates functioning uh which, you know, I mean versus that sort of classed it. Uh, maybe maybe that is more reasonable. Um, but you also mentioned just like having the gates uh physically open for a period of time. Could we just do that? Um, and uh um, I guess I'll, you know, I I want to get the same caution out there that I've mentioned to you, but I've I've mentioned this in humble uh in the past too is that my expectation by doing that um is that sediment, yeah, it would move. Um, but it would be about to the bottom of the housings of the gates and about the same width of the gates as a kind of trench headcut that would be moving up the river. Uh, as far as like generalized sediment removal from the whole impoundment, um, I I I wouldn't really expect that to um, you know, to, you know, like move sediment from specific places in front of houses or or, you know, docks or that sort of thing.
So.
I I guess, are are you, right now, are you proposing like a full fix for the gates that sort of like Acxi would recommend or is it more like in the recent discussions where you brought up just having it open for a period of time?
Well, in perfect world, um, you put the tanner gates like they have in Rutland because like Todd said, it's two and a half tiny surface and it cleans out from the very bottom. Um, if we were going to repair or replace the sliding gates that are in there, the bottom half of the dam, it doesn't clean out anything. Only the top half section of the dam gets cleaned out. So if we pull them all the way out, at least we'd be sucking all the way from the bottom. And when you open them up, you at least always be cleaning from the bottom. Um, but there is sediment. I want you guys to clarify something. There is sediment that gets cleaned out through those gates properly or if they're operated properly, isn't there?
As I, as I was just saying, I I would expect sediment to move, yeah. Um, it it and in the form of, you know, kind of a a single channel that's about as wide as the as the gates are to about the depth of what the gates are uh moving up through the impoundment. Uh, and it would get as far up into the impoundment as the um where wherever it hits the natural river bottom it at about the elevation of five of those gates is what I would expect to happen.
Yeah, because up in up in uh Rutland, um, those gates, I mean, I live right there on the river and I've watched it over the years, all the sediment came down through those gates. So when we've been told that we're not experts and the gates don't won't clean out sediment, that sediment came from Rutland because right where I live the sand all rolls right around that point and up to that sand is black dirt coming down the creek there by fairway for all the security attendants. So there's definitely a difference in type of sediment and I've done, I've got some oh, I had some guys I hired to go out in boats and uh check the channel up north of there. And it is a lot, a lot wider than I've been five times, six times wider than those gates. By by the use of their depth finder to, you know, show how wide and how deep and how far up that the channel went. So you know, we don't know what it's going to create. Yeah, in a perfect world, we like to put tanner gates in Humboldt, get that cleaned out and um you know, then keep it cleaned out and then do the rest of the project. You know, it's we're just trying to save the lake, you know, and we want to find out the what we can and can't do. Um, if everybody has a stomach to spend four million dollars or not, three and a half, four million, whatever it ends up being. Um, if that's what we have to do, you know, I wanted everybody to hear from you guys directly. So if that's what we have to do, then that's what we have to shoot for is the one time four million dollar deal or three and a half, whatever it ends up being. And Nate, Nate, you've been up here. Do you you agree with me that that all that salt came from through the Rutland Dam or how did it all get there and it's all sand?
Um, you know, I would, I would not be surprised if you saw some immediate effects from uh those gates not being open for a number of years. I don't know how many years, uh, but I think they were inoperable as I understand it. Um, and so I I think there there was likely a backlog of sediment behind that dam. Um, but within the context of a broader watershed condition, um, and, you know, I've, this is the thing I've I I think I had my first meeting in Humboldt ever in two thousand eight. Um, and uh there's a broader wat- watershed uh set of issues, um, given that there's about sixteen thousand uh uh square miles of watershed compared to the square miles of uh lake surface area that you have. So that sixteen thousand to one ratio uh from our, you know, just looking at how our lake uh restoration program looks at these types of projects, uh, it's the sort of thing where we'd never advise like dredging or, you know, investing that kind of money into removing the sediment just because we'd expect the the sediment to be moving a lot of river uh or a lot of uh sediments with it through the whole system. Um, and uh so it doesn't surprise me at all, Brett, that you that you saw, uh, you know, that you physically saw some immediate impacts. Um, that said, you know, Rutland is there. Um, it is, like you say, moving sediment uh down to a much lower level in the water column um and probably more effectively moving that sediment downstream. Um, and uh, so I I I just think of both of those things at the same time as you're considering what to invest in.
I I have another question. Uh, our conservation board wants to either cut the seven foot off the dam or take it completely out. Um, right now, the sandbar is approximately two foot higher than the level of the dam. And you guys have indicated to me that there'd be rules to opening gates because we are going to flush some sediment downstream for fish habitat stuff. So the big elephant in the room is all the sediment. So what are the rules if they cut the dam down by seven foot or take it out uh with the jet uh dealing with the sediment above the dam in either one of those cases? What how what's the procedure for that? Because that's something nobody's talked about.
Um, I'll I'll feel bad because it's something we've done before. Um, and what we look at is that whole watershed area leading down to the dam. Um, and uh we would do a Russell sediment analysis to figure out what's what sorts of volumes of sediment should annually be delivered to the dam site or the the Lake Nokoma, the impoundment, whatever you want to call it. Um, and when we, when we look at that, um, we figure that a stream should be able to use that or move about one year of sediment safely um at a time. And so uh in regulatory, we look at staging the removal, um, if it's going to move more than one year of sediment. Um, so in other words, like you might notch the center first, um, then you might lower uh successive portions and widen it out as you're going along um in order not to, you know, release it all at once, uh essentially. Um, the uh, I I I think within that too, moving sediment through gates is something that's also a concern of our our fisheries bureau. Um, and usually that's embedded into the operations plan that Casey would manage. And so for that part of it, Casey, if you wanted to jump in, and I don't know if you've looked at this specific one for a while, but there would be some implications as to like perhaps how long you should leave it open, how fast you open the gates, that sort of thing.
Right. If there was a proposed at, right now, there's not an operating plan for for this dam, but if you wanted to have one with the new gates, it would have timing and phasing and how great of opening and closing of how quickly um that pool could change and and we would we would coordinate that with fisheries for what works best for for the environment and for the pool and sediment.
And Casey, while you're talking about that, how come there isn't a uh operation plan for the Humboldt Dam? How come there hasn't been a a plan for opening and closing those gates or making sure they work? I read something that um you're responsible for it along with the conservation board for operating and doing that. How come that? How come you haven't followed through with that to make sure we're operating our gates properly?
They're broke, right?
Well, but if they're supposed to be operating, can't you? Should somebody have said, you know, you're supposed to get these fixed so that so that they operate like uh they're permitted uses or there's a court order to operate them? Like, I've got that with me so someone can see it.
Right. These gates weren't approved for use to pass storms. So they don't need to be open to pass the storms. So that's the only case that we would require um the gates to actually function. Is if they were.
I didn't hear you.
To pass the flood. So the gates don't have to open to to pass the 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 expected storms. It's designed to function with gates closed.
So so the gates may have been more just for like maintenance purposes, Casey, or something to that.
Yeah, I get it. Right. Could be anything. Full management. It could be any other purpose that's not flood control. These gates aren't used for flood control.
The the two court orders were one after the other for Humboldt and for the Rutland Dam. How is how is it that the Rutland Dam has a operational plan and Humboldt doesn't?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Uh, Rutland did have a much later. It, does anybody know when the Rutland gates were updated? I I feel like it was like early two thousands, late nineties, something like that, but that may be part of it is just in terms of, you know, the way the coded rules were when each of these actions happened. In other words, like the Ru- reasoner Dam was, you know, built or repaired probably before some of those restrictions existed, would you might guess, but.
And the order for the Humboldt for the Humboldt operation plan is to be able to install flashboards, not operate the gates.
Well, it says in there to maintain recreation, but operation of the gates was also in there. I read it somewhere there. That's okay. I'm not. So so you guys, we are wasting more your time or everybody's time. Your thought process is we need to do the whole project at once?
It at least needs to be the end goal.
Well, it's absolutely our angle.
And. Realistic.
Of.
Right, right.
Sorry, sorry, interrupt.
Yeah. Yeah. And from from my perspective, I mean, I I, yeah, as as I've been telling everyone involved all along, uh this ends up definitely being a local decision. Um, it uh um, it 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 does seem like um, if you if you put a lot of investment into the gates, that it would be a mistake not to look at the rest of the dam at the same time. Um, in other words, there are clearly some issues uh from a stability standpoint that, you you know, and I can't, I I don't think the engineers are telling you if that's a ten year or uh you know, thirty year issue right now. Um, it's a little unpredictable as to when you get floods and that sort of thing, but um, but you know, li- li- like I've been saying to you, Brett, uh, you know, you 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 don't want to get carried away with investing with with one thing and then find out that the rest of your thing is falling apart that that it depends on. So um, and that's not from a regulatory standpoint. It's just more of a common sense kind of standpoint.
And Casey, I have one more question for you. Um, you know, they got the, they want to cut seven foot off the dam. And in the past, we took out the Cornbell Dam because of safety issues because of the low head dam. Are you guys okay with that? Or what's the thought process behind creating another lower dam that we just took out south of Humboldt? Um, why would you go through it twice instead of just picking it all out?
Um, I I think I missed the question. Uh.
In the past, how, when we take out Cornbell Dam, I don't know. It doesn't matter. Ten, fifteen years, seven, ten years ago, whatever it was. We had a four foot dam, five foot dam, south of Humboldt. And we took it out because of safety issues. So now they want to cut the dam down. They take option two, they cut seven foot off the dam. Why would we put ourselves? What's your opinion and why would we put ourselves in that back in that same position versus just taking the dam all all the way out and being done with it? If that's if we can't uh rebuild it down.
Um, why could you? Sorry, it's hard. I'm having trouble hearing. Um, is the other damn part of this question? Why would you take out this one?
We already took one out approximately ten years ago. It was a four foot dam for safety issues.
Okay.
So why would you allow us? Why would they cut seven foot off of this dam? To put us ourselves back in the same position with another low, low head dam.
Oh, to make it short. Is that what you're saying?
Yep. Two options. One, take it, cut it down seven foot, or this option two is taking it all the way out. What's the DNR thought process behind that?
Um, so for dam safety that, that I work in is safety of the dam, not safety at the dam, like public safety around the dam. So a smaller dam isn't safer dam always. It has less water behind it, less, less risk of consequences. Um, if you're going to do that, you would also want to make it safe for recreation. So it might need some sort of ramp or other other means that Nate's more familiar with to keep people recreating on.
Yeah. And, and that, that is what's being contemplated, Casey. Uh, that I, I think, you know, the conservation board is uh, I, I think what Brett's trying to say is they looked at total removal. They looked at, um, you know, a a way to recreationally make the area safer to get fish passage at the full height uh with some uh kind of automated flashboards. And they also looked at total removal. Um, and so uh, yeah, it, and, and Brett, I, I think from, you know, I, I deal with that question more than, more than Casey would. I mean, uh, he's kind of telling you what can be permissible and not. And then also like, you know, there's uh the higher the hazard of a dam failing and creating a flood downstream. That's kind of core into the mission of what dam safety is about. Um, but, you know, from, from our perspective, I mean, and, you know, we've, we've done now thirty-six dam mitigations around Iowa. Um, and it, it essentially there's, th- there's oftentimes a lot of local discussion um as to what the best project would be for a given area. Uh, and uh, you know, uh, there needs to be options on the table so people can start visualizing it. And that's what the consultants put before your community. Um, I, from a DNR standpoint, um, as long as we're getting the fish passage, as long as we're getting the um, uh, you know, eliminating recirculating hydraulics at a dam for recreational safety. Um, we, we're not opposed to any options, but we're, you know, it, it's a local decision as, as to what to do. Um, I, I get the sense that's still happening from this meeting and this discussion. Um, and uh, um, so I don't, I don't feel any need to, you know, kind of put our uh finger on that scale. I think if the investment is worth it to the community uh for uh, uh, you know, things like uh making sure there's still decent fishing or, you know, uh, uh, having the sort of impoundment or river that you want upstream. That's all good. I think your opinion is valid. Um, in terms of, you know, if, if there isn't going to be Lake Nakomas, uh, you know, do you want to consider just, just having, just playing a river? I mean, uh, we're, we're absolutely open to that. Um, and uh, uh, in terms of if the county wants to go with option uh alternative, I believe that was two or B, um, you know, with the seven foot high option. I mean, I, I do see some benefits there in terms of floodplain impacts and, you know, uh, uh, those would be more so with the removal. But uh, in the end, it really is up to you guys locally to make that decision. Or to repair the dam. Um, we're, we're not going to, you know, try to legally block you from anything. Uh, this is, this is completely your decision.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Hey Nate.
Oh, sorry.
I, I did Rick Peterson Supervisor. Um, I think something we're overlooking is we have two dams in Humble. One up and Rutland upstream, which has a, oh, I would say poorer structure than the Reasoner Dam. And I think they made the mistake in the past of fixing the gates upstream first. I don't want to go through this second time backwards. I think we need to do something first with the Rutland Dam. Then doing something with the Reasoner Dam first. I don't know what you people in the audience think or the conservation board, but I've mentioned to it before to a couple of conservation members that uh, the Rutland Dam is in worse shape than the Reasoner Dam. Um, it doesn't have the homes along the, the lake above. Uh, I've often proposed to Todd that we should look at doing the Rutland Dam first. Uh, cutting it off, making a rock rapids, try to save the powerhouse because that's what the area up there is attractive. It's a great place for people to camp, recreate fish. And we have, we're going to have to do something with the Rutland Dam also. Uh, I, I think sometimes we should look at the whole picture rather than just look here in Humble. Because I know what you think in the past, they put the gates in, all the silt came down, filled in the lake. I'm sure it had something to do with it, but a lot of that silt comes from the riverbanks. That's what rivers do. They move, they wander, they erode, move silt downstream. Um, this is going to be a long-term project. It isn't going to be something we do a year, two years. It's going to be five, six, ten-year project, I'm afraid. Because things don't move fast and this type of thing. I think we should concentrate our efforts on the Rutland Dam. Do something up there so our public can see what can become of a a problem. We can do something to make that more attractive, more usable to the public. Um, and then we'd have some experience with how it works, what the results are on a much smaller scale, uh, lower cost. See what funding's available for these projects. Um, I don't believe the Reasoner Dam is going to fall apart within the next couple of years. Um, I do believe it'd be a better way to approach things. So you can see what the results are of what you do before you tackle something bigger.
Rick, I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, it's a big project. It's going to take some time. Nothing's been done. You know, I mean, Todd, I listened and Nate gave me a recording. Sorry, couldn't be there Wednesday, but um, so I listened to it. There's a lot of good valid points and both sides, you know, of what everybody wants to do. And I think you're exactly right, Rick. That they both need to be addressed and it's going to be a long-term project and it's going to cost more money. But it goes back to destination, Humble, town, you know, that's what we're fighting for. You know, so I think it's, that's a great process. Uh, before I forget, Nate, I want to ask one more question. That silt that's above the Humble Dam that's exposed all that sand? What? What would be the process? Is it possible to go dig some of that out there so we can cover that with water? So we and while we're doing the process like Rick's talking about, this might take a few years, but will take a few years uh, to accrue some money, to get some grants and do whatever we need to do. Is that possible to go dig some of that sand out? Is there a permitting process available? That we can dig out some of that sand so we don't have to deal with those trees growing right there? And there's a ton of people that park there every day and admire the river. Is there a process available? We can go dig some of that out manually? And so it's all exposed water, so it's not higher than the dam.
Um, essentially, yes, it's, it's possible to excavate in a channel. Um, with the appropriate permits, um, you'll need to uh come up with, with a plan of the area that would be uh excavated. Uh, and submit that to uh there, there's an online permit system. I think I might've sent you that before Brett, um, for more related to the dam. Um, and uh, it essentially goes to Iowa DNR uh sovereign lands and threatened and endangered species review. It goes to DNR floodplains. And it goes to the US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and uh, there may be some restrictions, so you may not, you know, it may not look exactly like what you originally were proposing. Um, but uh, essentially you'd have to uh go through that permitting process, uh, similar to what, you know, you'd be doing if you uh were doing work on the dam uh, uh, going forward. So uh, and I don't know if you Casey, did, do you have any floodplain thoughts on that in terms of things they might run into? I know you're much more focused on dam safety and stuff.
Right. Um, oh yeah, I think you hit most of it. The, the, getting that to the core is important. Um, and you'd also want to remember that it's going to come back. The so, the sand, the deposits there. If you take it out, it got there for a reason. The river's going to put it back. So as long as you're okay with ongoing and accepting that's an ongoing cost.
Well, part of it is blocks some of our drainage that comes from the north.
Right, right. I see that.
When it's higher than what the dam is, it's a, a sand barrier that, and there's a lot of farmers that depend on that drainage to get their crops dry.
Right.
Well, we have no way to get rid of it now. It's there. Need a way to alleviate some of it anyway.
Well, fifty years ago, I, I guess my question is, is fifty years ago, whenever these things were dropped in Humble's hands? What if they'd have said no? What would they have done? Would they have taken them out then? Did we accept them? I don't remember. I wasn't.
Why, why when they took the gates out, did we ruin the river? Why was that within a year? Came within one year of opening Rutland Gates? And when Rich Monk was the supervisor, he said they had permits to do, to do Humble's gates first. But then Gary, Dave and Martin Brown threw the lawsuit at him. So he said they got scared in Rutland first. But it was ironic that as soon as those gates were open, we lost a river.
Well, we're, we're just damned if we do and damned if we don't. That's kind of the bad thing.
Rick, Rick, your ideas morning with Doug and I heard it's how we get the best of all worlds. If we can pull that off, we can take the time to do it. If the conservation board would be acceptable looking at that. Just making your rapids up in Rutland. They wanted, they want to grow their campground out there. It will still be a destination for Humble County. And in the pro- in the process, you know, like say if we could scrape some of that sand off, so we look at a full pool of water, it looks nice, trees don't grow. And then does everybody have the stomach to move forward in with a long-term plan? Cause you're right. Dave said it several times too. A dam's not going anywhere. It's a solid four dam. Even, you know, in the immediate future that to go ahead and spend the four million dollars. I know there's still some money available from the state. Um, that we can get our hands on once we have a, have a plan, you know? And that plan is going to take a while for you guys to accrue some money and, you know, apply for some grants, apply for the applications and get the money. But we could get some money set aside if we all would come together and say, that's a great grand plan. And I think it is a great grand plan. It makes everybody happy. And there is a cost to the county, to the citizens, and, you know, to everybody for our quality of life in Humble. It's not free. It's not free anywhere. You know, we give tax to pay them for businesses to move in. You know, we do all kinds of things for all of our entities and let's, let's do the same for this. Thank you, Rick. That was a great idea.
Yeah. Well, I want to correct you, Brett. I didn't say to, to do what you're proposing to the Reasoner Dam. I was just saying, I think we should attack the Rutland Dam first. I don't, don't twist my words. That's all I'm all support on it. Cause I'm, I'm not currently supporting either side for sure. But I think we need to address the upstream dam first. And I think it'd be a good example of what things can look like. And then we could see it and see if it's something we like.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't try to.
Yeah, okay. Well, I do.
I thought it's a great grand plan that I've never heard before. I think, I think a great idea.
Um, I'd like to interject one thing, and I don't disagree with Rick, or I don't think anybody here would disagree that the Rutland Dam needs attention. It's not in good shape. Bear in mind, neither is the Reasoner Dam. There's more reports. There's been more work done on that. Uh, touching base with, you know, conservation board members, they're fully aware of the Rutland Dam, obviously, as we all are. But we're sort of like shifting gears and everything has been focused on this Reasoner Dam. A phenomenal amount of information, work, plans, projects have already been laid out. This feels like, it's like, let's take the focus off of what we've been focusing on, move it literally upstream. And just to, oh, let this uh stew a little bit more. This is stewed long enough. There is more scientific evidence than I've ever seen in my experience trying to make a decision on something from this dam project, so to speak, literally and figuratively, that it's, it's unreal. So, yeah, no, I don't argue with Rick. The, I don't argue. I don't think the conservation board or anybody else would. Something will be done, has to be done with Rutland Dam. But we're shifting our focus away from where we are. We were at a point. We had the information, we had the funds, we had everything laid out, and all of a sudden, we've been going backwards ever since. We're never going to get past the scientific proof.
Where do we have the funds?
Where do we have it? When we had option two, which the yeomans and yeowomens worked from the conservation board, literally and figuratively laid out on the table. And it didn't, it was approved by the county. It did not move forward essentially because it was a joint city project and, and it just kind of got dropped. That was after many years literal of research and work by the conservation board. Who is the authority and the governing entity that works with the dam? That was shot down for the moment, and then we've been going backwards ever since.
And you never had no funds.
There was funds, hugely available funds for.
To apply for.
Yes, yes.
There was no funds guaranteed to us.
They didn't even take that funds to fix their trail, which Brett offered.
Well, this, I side with the conservation work. It was laid out here and it was pretty darn solid. And that did not move forward. We've kind of gone backwards since. Yes, sir.
But that was, so that wiped out Lake Nakomas. And that's what we're adamantly opposed to.
Understand that way this morning.
Yeah.
But it's hard to the same to fix the dam as it is to knock it down.
It is not.
Yeah, it is.
It is. It is.
It's exactly.
We presented that to you.
They're going to spend four million dollars.
It's exact same money. Why not just use the money? If you're, if you're, if you're going to go that route, it, it's same money to tear it down versus have uh the rapids and all that, then why would we not want to have a destination place instead of just tearing it down? I mean, what you're saying, Brett, doesn't make any sense. It's an oxymoron. Because.
You.
I mean, let's, what I'm saying is, why would we not want to have a destination for, for um Humble? We did have the Destination Iowa funds pretty much in the bag. We were, we were told that. So we would have already started on that.
That's no truth.
We're just going off bridge now. Let's just.
Sandy, it's basically the same amount of money to do option two as the ax- axing proposal to save Lake Nakomas. And that's what we're fighting for.
No, it's more than that to save Lake Nakomas. Way more.
Oh, we got, you guys want to believe all the reports all the years? It was three point two million.
Three point two million to fix it. And now here we are at four million. And you want to save money?
I, I have, I have another, pulls over an idea. The biggest hurdle for all this is the sediment behind the dam. Wouldn't we all agree?
And that's, that's the problem, Brett. Even, even if we restore the dam to its perfect state, you're going to have to ongo dredging forever.
You know, it looks like a bull's list. You know, we didn't have to dredge before. When they gave the option optional, before they opened Rutland, we never had to dredge. And all of a sudden, I understand we got more tile, but then of a dial, when that cave in, Dell Erickson and that big tile up there. For that's where a lot, a lot of dirt came into Brett's. I know it's a natural filtration up there to uh off Northern Berkhamer Bridge. He's losing thirty foot a year. So we've been to me.
That's a lot of silt.
He wanted to rip rap that. And the DNR said, no, we can't do it because fish, I don't know, fish went in the water. Anyway, he was uh burst, Tim Burris.
Yeah, I know.
He was trying, he was trying to help us do there. I know it's a natural filtration, but when they put that top. When they put that tile in the dials and that one caved in, you know, they had a screw up there, that's where all that dirt came in Brett's. But like I say, it's ironic that when they opened the gates in Rutland, that we lost our river.
But, but what, what I'm going back to is, have you guys ever considered filing a claim with your insurance company for. The previous boards not doing their job and following the court order? An insurance company would pick up the dredging because it was caused because the previous boards didn't um follow the court order to put gates in both dams. I think it's legitimate, I mean, if you, we're then talking about road grader, some road grader slides by somebody else, you turn in a claim. You know, whether the driver was on his phone or fell asleep or whatever, I don't think it's a big stretch. That the insurance company would pick up the dredging because of the previous boards not doing their. It's a book or lot, it doesn't cost anything to turn it in.
Like I said, I think we're doing more backtracking than forward thinking here.
No, you're not really, it's just a matter of, the dam's been there for a long, long time, right? It's not hurting anything, is it?
I don't know, you know.
Well, okay, no, wait a minute.
I don't know.
Okay, so Rutland Dam, I've walked across this, this far part, and if it did fall out, who cares? We got a dam right over here, look at it, just drive down the road, there's a dam there yet, right? Who cares if it's broken in the middle, does that hurt anything?
Well.
I know one thing I bet to every dam around here, I'd like to have talked to everyone. I would say that dam in Iowa Falls is kind of possible for people, I just look at it, I couldn't believe it. I went up there with a guy in a boat, that whole upper part, have you ever seen it? Is all appeal, it's, it's bad, but who cares? They have a good time boating up there, and there's actually a boat place, sell, that sells boats in it. And there's a lot of people there, a lot of people, okay, so we're gonna dam, it's been sitting there for a hundred, ten years. Nobody ever brought up this and made it into a big rain and tell, I don't know, somebody wanted to take it out.
Well.
Well, okay, so Rutland Dam isn't bad, who cares? Believe it me, why would you want to spend millions of dollars on a little bitty river? That's sitting on limestone, you know, and it's not hurting anyone, but. I, I had asked Brett, just if it's possible if some local guys could clean that sand off, make a pinch. I mean, so like, excuse, we gotta get rid of those ones, we gotta burn, damn you, we got a message. The people that live in the, I call it the body, that river stunk, this one, stunk. It turned yellow, right now the rainwater is building up, and there's a dam right there. And all those people don't really want to say anything because they're old, you know, they care about it. So if you took the dam out, you have a big flat mud spot there, so that would have to all be filled in. You know what I mean, and the creek has to be put back in its normal place, because it was dug out by dude. And same way with the mill race, that has to be all built in, the, the, the powerhouse has to be tore out.
He wouldn't have a way to fill the fish ponds either.
That's okay, he cares about that anyway. I mean, no, I mean, as far as people, I talk to people, that, all their kinds of people. That they don't want to spend no money on anything, here, stacks are too high, you know.
I think we beat this thing to death.
I think so too, and.
Conservation Board threw their hands in the air a few months ago and said, to hell with it, we don't want nothing else to do with it.
I don't know that that's.
I got the floor, damn it, oh, sorry, Dave. Everybody butts over the top of everybody, you can't hear a damn thing, and if you got hearing aids like I do. Everybody talking, I cannot hear shit, all right?
Got you.
Now, as I was gonna say, I think we need to turn this back over to the conservation board, they have control of the dam. I would like to direct them, if possible, to work with this committee. Has been done in the last fifty, sixty years as a boat club, to get volunteers to help work on it. You know, clean the trees, dredge out, get the permits for dredging out. Todd's caught in the middle of all this because everybody's yelling at him, and he answers to his board. That board's got to answer back to us, so I think that we control it, we own it. But they do the work on it, they control the management of it, so we need to deal with them. Um I agree with Rick, the Rutland Dam needs to be done fixed first, or something done with it. But I would like to see all that silt that come down from DD thirty-five. Uh county drainage district cleaned out, they're at their boat ramp, if you'd get a channel going, you might be able to do something. But you gotta start someplace, I mean, we've talked for the last twenty years, and nobody's done nothing. We've done studies, we've thrown money away that the county didn't have on studies, let's put some of that money and. To work and do something, get started, do something on the damn thing. Otherwise, we're gonna be sitting here another twenty years and not doing a damn thing.
Right.
So let's start someplace, if we start at the gates, let's fix the gates, if we dredge, let's do some dredging. Let's go to Rutland, fix some of that up there, cut it off, do something with it. If you want people to come to town, you're gonna have to get in something that'll attract them. Still talking about it for the past twenty years, ten years, let's do something. This board needs to take action and do something, I'm off my soapbox.
I think there is one misconception, too, also, they're thinking that the only people that want it are the people who live on the river.
No, I don't live on the river, and I'd like to see it saved.
I do, so I want to.
I got a boat.
That misconception, and there is a lot of boats.
You look around town, you see how many boats around the yard, we all gotta go to a lake someplace to fish, because you can't go up the river.
There was kids down, kids, young, older kids down there fishing yesterday. Kid said he caught five walleyes, which.
I just talked to it, yeah.
And he's like, no, I did.
Yeah, I just talked to him directly.
So they still use it.
They use it, right. My question being is if they take that dam out, where will the fish be? We're in the old.
You're in that river. It's just a place people will fish, that one, it's very hard to get on anywhere else with, with the county owns or. These are knock on doors and getting on private property or.
But this guy was your poor dodge, and he said they're fishing, going, when they took the dam out, they have no idea, they're all appeared.
You can still go up the east branch, you can go up, there's two holes up there, it's got a nice cat in it.
Well.
Anyway, yeah, Dave's right, we gotta do something.
I do agree with Dave, and I didn't mean, sorry, Dave, I know it's harder to hear.
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
When there's too many people talking, you can.
I fully appreciate that.
Earlier, we advised the authorities of conservation to chief, secret legal counsel.
Right.
And that is the process to go through to protect all the citizens of Humboldt County. So they'll get a good legal understanding of how to go forward. And I think that's what you're looking at is, what are the implications of working with a nonprofit? Because am I not correct, that's one of the questions you're gonna be asking this legal team, guys.
All right.
And I did find out one interesting thing, my wife did an online grant writing process. And all the volunteers can, we can add up all their hours, once we do a grant or do something, and charge. Twenty-eight dollars an hour goes towards our portion of that grant. So that really adds up fast when we're doing some planning or doing some other work on it. I mean, it's just a, it's a little, it's something, but it does add up for which proportion we now could have, if we're helping you or doing something. You know, we'd love to help you, we'd love to work together on it, but that's all twenty bucks an hour for every man, every person working, it'd be a big deal. That's a big contribution. There is, you guys are right, I'd love to work together and get it done, I'd love to have them guys, you, you take care of it. If we want to step up the play, say, let's go for four million dollars, see where we end? Let's, let's try it, you know, that, we're all to that point, we're all tired of it, you're exactly right, Eric, we're all tired of it.
One quick thing too, that conservation board meeting that we got invited to and just listened, uh there was a lot of good. Uh historical information brought up in regards to this dam, obviously, we're all decided if they just show up yesterday or last week. Um you really have to look back at that, these folks have that information. And, you know, that's where I'm basing this on, is the historical information, people have been looking at this, Brett, for a number of years, you know.
I've got a book for myself.
Yep, and so it's unfortunate, nothing we can do about it. Uh you know, we can't backtrack on that and do things that we weren't around and didn't have the capability to make decisions. There's other boards and other things decided, but we work in here now, and we can look at some of the historical information. That's been brought before other boards in the past, and then, of course, the, the hard, cold, scientific, factual information we have to work with today, so. Uh and I really, boy said this, and I'll say it again in this meeting, I commend the conservation board for doing that. And as noted, they do report back to us, as Dave said, and when they reported back, I can't see it's been anything but. The absolute best information that they could derive as a conservation board, so, let's uh, let's work with that. They've got, as Rick said, the, the legal, um you know, council for them to work with, which is good. And see what that amounts to, and then get this moved forward.
One, one last thing, is it possible to have one of the supervisors ask the insurance company if there's any liability there? It doesn't cost me anything, it's, it happens all the time, sure, that's insurance companies. They're the one that defended the county in a lawsuit because they were on the hook. So, I mean, it's, it's no skin off any of our backs to try. Would you please, thank you.
I'll make the call.
Thank you.
My one question on that, um like.
Basically, we're suing ourselves.
Yeah. Like with, if moderator gets in an accident, we file a claim, but we also pay a premium every year on. Moderator, so do you guys pay a premium specifically for the dam?
No, no.
No, but it's including dinner overall.
General, I think Rick's touched on that, we'd be suing ourselves.
Well, you're not suing yourself, you're turning it in. You know.
Against yourself. Yeah, against your own negligence, so I don't know that that would go very far, but they can ask, I mean, in all fairness, Dave can ask.
Okay, we beat this to death.
Yep.
My recommended, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but my recommendation to the board of. Conservation Board is to start working with the people, let's get something done. If we start, begin a little bit each year. We can start budgeting a little bit money for the dam, the recreation. Todd, put it in your budget a little bit, let's, let's start somewhere, you know, if they want a fundraiser and run, raise money. Let's earmark it for the dam and yet, let's get going.
Put it in Trish's lap, when you said budget, she just said, oh my god.
Todd turns in a budget every year for the county, so.
But we all know what budget is, it's tighter than tight, so.
Right, so, but for fifty years, they've neglected putting any of it, so let's, let's do it.
Um one thing the DNR told us, if we ask for anything, it has to come from the owners of the dam.
Right, so the conservation board are in control, they have to put in for the grants and.
But if we, if you want to ask if we can move some of that sand off the boat ramp, so if that's something Todd has to apply for.
I, way I understand it.
Do that transport management to your group, you would take care of doing all the paperwork and getting the permitting. I would have to check into whether we would sign it, you guys would sign the permitting, I would assume one of those.
I would say if we're.
Yeah, I don't know, they just told, they told me it all, and the grant was done from the owner.
Yeah, you have the rights to do it.
One of us will sign it.
Work together on it, but let's do so.
Every week, somebody get five gallons, that old man who carried, there you go.
Okay, so twice now, that it's been cleaned off, you know what I mean? It looks better when it's cleaned off than it is. Uh so, is it possible that there's also people to go out there and put that off?
Uh that's what they tried by clarify.
Well, I know, it's been done twice, and so out of that, okay, so.
Well, the first time we paid for it.
Yeah, but I don't think we should have to pay for it, I mean.
Well, I'm just saying that they hired, what is Doug? Doug Marshall claimed it.
And, and it'd be simple to clean off, and uh. It, it would look a hundred times better for people sitting there. And then, the big, next big problem is it's mud coming down the previous, it's still bad in probably three foot.
A campground is worth fifteen thousand dollars, maybe they just come down again for you.
Okay.
You know anybody with a trucking company that haul it out? First loads on you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need time for a new tablet, either one of you?
Yeah, I actually had to.
Took a cake a couple of times.
All right, moving back to the agenda, I think we're down to committee report, all right.
All I have this past week uh is, as I mentioned earlier, I did attend the conservation board meeting on Wednesday evening. And that was what I had this past week.
I had Wednesday afternoon at three, Humboldt County Housing, and then I went to the conservation meeting on Wednesday evening.
There, Wednesday. I think it was Thursday.
It was Wednesday.
I had the same conservation meeting I attended as well.
Okay, seven, um Tuesday the seventeenth, I had the Humboldt County Opioid and Alcohol Co- Coalition. And that was uh via Zoom, and then on Wednesday the eighteenth, I had Kitty Cat. Um daycare and I had, did that by a phone, and then I also, on Wednesday the eighteenth, I had a ISAC. Education Committee meeting, and that was um via Zoom also.
So Andy, I got a question on the, on the daycare, how's that doing?
Well, it, we, we've been having a lot of personnel issues here lately, um. So, it's, it's.
Kind of the old catch twenty-two, if you had more staff, you could have more kids, and if you had more kids, you could have more staff.
Right, correct, it's just, it's just a ongoing vicious circle, she hired five. She had, uh, in the last meeting, she said she had to let, well, two weeks ago, she had to let go two. And then she hired five, and then she had to let go one, and then of that, I mean, it's just a revolving door. For um staff, the um bonuses are helping, but um, I don't know. It's, once they're still working, I don't think we've got the food. Um we've got that application into where, you know, kind of like how the schools get their food paid for.
Yeah.
Um the daycare is the same thing, and we're, we're finalizing that, we're, we're finally getting down to the end of that. And once that gets approved, then that's gonna help us tremendously, because food is, as everybody knows, everything's gone up in the grocery store. And it's the same thing, you know, for this, so, once we get that approved, we get to, I think they said we can go back thirty days. So, I mean, yeah.
So as I was joining courses with, what's the name, the.
Yeah, I can't remember that.
Building families, um McKinley Bailey.
Bailey, yes, McKinley, has uh us doing that, has it helped, helped us?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we would, we're not as, in the red as what we would have been. I mean, it, it's keeping some long-term employees, it's still, it's like any place else. I mean, it, it's keeping some long-term employees, it's still, it's like any place else, you have that. Come and go revolving window, and that's with every place.
Along with Rick's is, I see in other towns, and I'm using Port Dodge, that new uh facility they built out there on the end of town. Out by the swimming pool, uh Eagle Grove's had a new one, newer one for years. They've gotta be doing something, you know, and it's the people that get that dollar raised that jump from this job to that job. Cause a dollar to them is, is a lot.
It happens to them too, I mean, trust me, every, we've done research with other daycares, everybody's going through the same thing. It's, it's not just our daycare, it's every daycare, trust me.
I know, I'm just.
We've done the research, Port Dodge, Port Dodge is, isn't doing any better, you, same thing with the Wright County ones, they used a lot of their. Sorry, their ARPA money. And.
Yeah, they threw a bunch of ARPA money at it.
Oh my gosh, yeah, they threw.
Did both, both Belmont then?
Yes.
So they have two.
Yep, I think they threw in like over a million dollars, I think, didn't they do like one point two or five million to daycare? Right, did, out of their ARPA?
Yeah, I think you're right.
County's same way.
So.
Well, just curious.
But that's, but that's where we're at, I mean, it's, and I hate to say it, it's probably gonna be an ongoing thing for a long time. But that is all I had.
Alright, thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet.
My books fall, but, okay, Wednesday, I was at the Humboldt County Housing Development Meeting. That was at three o'clock, I was at the Conservation Meeting at five o'clock. Uh, that's the only thing official for the county. And I would like to apologize to everybody for bursting and raising my voice and getting loud, but. You can beat stuff to death for a long time, and it never goes anywhere, so I'm sorry, I apologize, I normally don't do that. I usually sit back and listen, cause I learn a hell of a lot more, I apologize.
Accepted, yep.
Yes, oh, no worries, Dave.
I had several times like that Wednesday night, I wanted to ask questions, but I didn't know if we were allowed to, so I just sat there, cause there's.
Yep.
I have five or six questions, I'd love to throw at that board and, and put them on the spot, cause I felt kinda like there was. It was more give than.
We were sitting there just to listen.
Listen, yeah, so that to me was a little frustrating, but.
Yep.
Alright, anything else to come for the board?
Make a motion if Trish doesn't have anything, shut the tape off.
Okay.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Shut the eye.
I know, hey, he did really good, he didn't wake up until twenty after, so he did good.
He doesn't like long meetings either.
No, he doesn't, it was really funny. He was watching you guys, I, I, when he woke up and I was trying to get him settled down. And he, you wanna see, his little eyes were just like, oh.
Well, he is a baby, so he's cheap entertainment.
Alright, we'll see you guys, bye-bye.